Good evening and welcome to the Oregon Board of Education meeting of October 17. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance to the flag and a moment of silence. Moment of silence this evening is for Deborah Smith, who was a custodian, Marilyn Brown, who was one of our bus drivers, and Diane Nepper, who was a special education teacher. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Smith, do you have the roll call?
Yes, Mr. Shane.
Present.
Mrs. Muller.
Here.
Mr. Savitt.
Here.
And Mr. Zavisky.
Yeah.
Please silence all of your personal electronic devices during the meeting. I need a motion to adopt the agenda as written, please.
So.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shane.
Yes.
Mr. Savitt.
Yes.
Mr. Zavisky.
Yes.
And Mrs. Muller.
Yes. We start out our evening this evening with the Clay High School Government Report. Please come forward and this is Marissa Mariano and Pearson Lenhart. Good evening and thank you for coming. Want to use the microphone here and cable, please?
Yep, perfect. This is your first report, huh?
Yeah.
All right, we're excited.
All right, so my name's Marissa and this is Pearson, obviously, and we're members of the student government. I'm a senior, he's a junior. We've done a lot this year in the beginning. We started off with our senior spots. We had 96 seniors paint a spot, which is really good for everyone, like that's I think the most we've had in a while. And our attendance at the football games has also been extremely high, like we've had student sections bigger than years prior and everyone just seems to be getting along and having a great time supporting with the school spirit. We continue the tradition of the senior sunrise. That was beginning of September. We had pancakes made by our chef and it was just a really good time. We had quite a few people come out to that too, which was really good because it's at like six in the morning or something like that, it's way too early. We hosted our first spirit week and we had a lot of participation, surprisingly, because sometimes we don't always have a lot of participation, but a lot of our people, including the student government and just classmates in general, showed out and dressed up. And the freshman student government put on powder puff and Iron Man and continued that and we were able to get every single class had a team, which was good because we were scrambling at the end for a sophomore team. And seniors won both of those.
Of course.
Mm-hmm. No bias at all, absolutely no bias. And then for our Hoco Week, of course, we had the powder puff and then we had the bonfire. The bonfire went really well. We had a ton of people come out, people stayed till the very end. We had games, the Hoco Court was involved in that, we had like a donut eating contest and all this, super fun. Music was great, it was just a really good time, like it was, the whole school kind of came together for that. We had our giant pep rally, which was like an hour long. That was a lot of work to put on. We were a little tired after that week, but that one went really well. We had a dump tank, which is something that we usually haven't done before, and some people got dumped and some people weren't happy about it, but...
Those people were who? Staff members, right?
Yeah. And some people from the court just decided to get into dump tank too, I don't know. Kind of just do whatever you want. Our king and queen of homecoming renouncements, that was Camden Williams and Izzy Briesler. That was fun, we got to announce them, they got to have their homecoming on the field. And then most recently, we had our college career and military day. That went super well. We had lots of people come in, like I'm, one that I sat through was Mr. Jerky. He did a presentation on small business, but the, we had the fair and everyone got cool free stuff and got to learn more about the college.
To start off, I'll tell you about, all about our perfect attendance award. 440 students have perfect attendance from the dates of September 11th to October 6th. These students were awarded with a snow cone from the cone ice truck during their lunch period. That was pretty amazing. We are very excited to say that Clay has won the Pasadena Challenge for the 11th year in a row. It is also another great achievement that Clay has won this challenge every time we have participated. Career and tech student officers have begun this, have begun meeting this year and have been doing very well. These officers will be running eventually for local and state offices. The TRIAM induction took place on the 28th of September. TRIAM is the Music Honor Society. Students are inducted, inducted into the club based upon their academic citizenship and leadership within the performing arts community ensembles. There were 10 inductees this year, which is pretty good. Moving on, I'll speak to you about some dates that you guys can put in your calendars. The Candy Crawl will be taking place on October 22nd from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Our annual haunted hallways will take place on October 30th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. As usual, many clubs, sports, and career in techs will have a hallway to participate in this year. The band banquet will take place on October 25th this year. This event will begin at 6:00 p.m. On November 1st, the eighth graders will make their annual visit to Clay and tour the school. The next day, on the 2nd, the school will host the eighth grade parent meeting. The choir's annual vespers concert will take place on December, December 17th at 3:00 p.m. This is the annual traditional concert presented by the choir and the symphonic band and concert band. On December 8th, Clay's Varsity Voices will be performing on Channel 13, so for the holidays, they will also be performing at the Lights Before Christmas on December 18th. Along with this, Varsity Voices will perform at banquets. These include the Lucas Soil and Water Conservation District on November 8th and the Toledo Harbor Lighthouse Preservation Society on December 7th. Those are the like private groups, so. Wednesdays, December 6th, the Limelighters support the Toledo Symphony, Toledo Symphony's Holiday Concert sponsored by the Cenobis by taking care of the auditorium setup in Tierdome. The symphony will be located here at the high school. And then to finish off my report, I will highly suggest you all be sure that you save the date for the upcoming Limelighters show. The dates will be the 17th, November 17th, 18th, and 19th, and the play is called The Old Man and the Old Moon. To kind of sum it up, I got a short description, so. In this music-filled theatrical fable, the old man tends to the old moon, refilling the light that spills out every night. When his wife unexpectedly leaves home, the old man abandons his post and plunges the world into darkness. His eventful journey across land, air, and sea to find her reminds them and us of the unwavering power of love. This magical and inventive tale, full of music and puppetry, will be a delight for the entire family. Thank you all for listening to me and Marissa and I hope you guys enjoy the rest of your night and amazing meeting.
Amazing, that's right. Wow, thank you.
Thank you, that was much appreciated and very well done. So we're going to move to staff and community recognition. We have some very special students here. Mr. Gregory?
Sure, thank you. So I will invite Mr. Jerzki up, please. So anytime we have an opportunity to recognize some of our best and brightest, we try to do that here, and tonight is another one of those great opportunities with the success of these four students here at Clay. So I'm going to let Mr. Jerzki kind of talk about these students a little bit and then we'll invite you up, shake your hand, and then stay up here for a picture with your certificate, if that sounds okay, so.
Okay, first of all, there are three students that are being recognized by the College Board National Recognition, and when you think of college board, think of advanced placement or AP courses that we offer here at Clay High School, because some of the requirements that they, they have to achieve are earned through those advanced placement courses. So they are recognized for their hard work in, in high, high school and their strong academic performance, and then they are recognized in one of four areas. National African-American Recognition Program, National Hispanic Recognition Program, National Indigenous Recognition Program, and are the National Rural Small Town Recognition Program. So they are in one of those four categories are, are three students that receive these awards, and they have to have a certain criteria. So the criteria that they have to fulfill as well is a 3.5 cumulative GPA or higher. They, on the PSAT, the pre-SAT or the National Merit Scholar Qualifying Test, they have to score within the top 10% of the assessment they take, or earn the three or higher on two or more of the AP exams that they took either their freshman or sophomore year. So great accomplishments. So with that, we have three people that have received the award, and if these three people, I think only one of these three is here, so she's going to be front and center all by her lonesome, but our three students that did earn the awards, Mina Brown, Christina Chen, and then Lydia Roberts is here, so Lydia, come on up.
Lydia, congratulations. And so if we could get a picture with Lydia, if you don't mind. Congratulations, we're very proud of you.
And our fourth student, well, I, I always said that I wanted a perfect score on an We achieved that a few years ago with Hayden Dickerson. We filed that up by another one last year, and now we have a perfect score again this year on our ACT. And it just happened to be the sister of the one who had this perfect score last year too. So something's running in the family, I don't know what that is, obviously some very intelligent children that they have. But Cassidy, come on up before I even say anything about you. Come on up, Cassidy Bauer. So here we go, Cassidy, all your accomplishments. She's in the band, she's in the color guard, she's in the pep band, NHS, Volunteer Focus, Eye Club. She volunteers at the Red Cross, the Imagination Station, Metro Parks, and she's going on to study chemical engineering, have you decided yet? Akron UT, one of those two, I believe, was the last that I knew, either one of those two. And a perfect score. So once the plaque is made, it is currently being made, her picture, individual eight-by-ten plaque will go up on her 30-plus ACT wall down by the auditorium. And then also, she was recognized as a National Merit Scholar Commended Student, which that is based on her test, National Merit Scholar Qualifying Test, and there are only 915 students in the state of Ohio that have received this award, and she is one of 34,000 in the whole entire country that received this award as well, and that is based on her National Selection Index on the PSAT, excuse me, PSAT or National Merit Scholar Qualifying Test. So Cassidy, congratulations, and I think we'll be hearing great things from, from you in the near future, so congratulations.
Thank you.
You can come up, Mom, if you want, a little closer? You've got a great zoom.
Thank you.
Cassidy, who's here with you tonight?
My mom and my dad.
Yeah, what are their names?
Michelle and Jason Bauer.
All right, thank you guys for coming out, we appreciate it so much.
And for the record, we're done having smart kids.
Yeah? You sure? No more? Awesome. Well, congratulations to all the kids. I know some of you have band concert, if you want to sneak out, that's fine, now would be the time to do that, but congratulations, we're so proud of you and you represent Clay. We, we can't wait to see what comes next. So have a great night, we'll see you down there at some point.
You know, we have wonderful students, very, very brilliant students, and we're very proud of them, but we also have some outstanding employees. We're, tonight we're going to recognize our service people. You do a great job, you serve wonderful lunches and you're very patient with our kids and we thank you for that. So Mr. Gregory?
Yes, thank you. So we're excited to recognize all the folks that are here tonight, and certainly everyone that is part of our organization in the Food Services Department, so Julie read my mind, I was going to call her up. So how this is going to work is we're going to read all the names and when your name comes up, please, or when your name's announced, please come up and we will hand you a certificate and stay up here, then we're going to give a big group picture. And on behalf of the district and certainly myself, I want to thank you guys for everything you do every day. You come in, you get it done, you take care of our kids, you care about what they eat, you care about how they eat, you care about the way food looks, the way it tastes, all those things that are so special, because when kids leave school, and we're probably all the same way, what's the best memory you have of school? Oh, lunch and recess, lunch and recess, lunch and recess, right? You hear that all the time, lunch and recess. Even though we know there's a whole lot more to school, but maybe not, you know, it's important. So anyways, thank you for coming out, we appreciate, I was not expecting this many, so I really, really am excited to be able to honor you this way. So with that, I'll read the names, I guess I'll hand you the certificates, one at a time?
Okay.
Does that sound good? We didn't really rehearse this. All right, Sandra Allridge, please come up if you're here. Love this sweatshirt.
Thank you.
Okay, Angelica, how do you say it, Bereloo? Bereloo?
Bury you.
Bury you? That'll take me a while for that one. Lisa Barrett? I know I saw Lisa. Thank you very much. Ann Crawford? Michelle Hagaman? Rebecca Hernandez?
Good job on the name, Hal. Thank you.
Anthony McLaughlin? Kaitlyn Mendon? Victoria Morelli? Can't pick on this. Kristy Nagy? Bonnie Ortega? Sam Peterson? Linda Powers? Long walk up. Sandra Reardon? Mary Riley? Penn Roman? Nicole Sheets? Barbara Stringham? And then Diana Wetmore? Doris Wiley? And Cynthia Zieroff? So another round of applause for all these students. So another round of applause for all these students. So again, on behalf of the district, thank you guys for everything you do, I hope you appreciate our small token of thanks. We do appreciate what you do every single day, you don't always get told that, but just know from our hearts we do care, and if you don't mind, we can squeeze a little tighter for a picture. Julie, if you'll hop in there.
Between the grave.
Between the grave. I don't know how this is going to work.
Perfect.
There you go, that would be good if we didn't have to do that. A couple of people, there we go.
Make sure you can see me.
I'm so old for this.
All right.
My phone over.
Got it?
Very important person right there.
Good. Congratulations. And you do not need to stick around for the whole meeting unless you really, really, I think Karen thought she was going to get a second recognition, but...
She always deserves it.
I know how she works. All this power is going to her head, and I get it.
I'm a taste tester.
Thank you for coming, we appreciate it.
Have a good night, everyone.
Please be advised that this meeting is being audiotaped and will be available on the district's website. We need the admissions report.
All right, very grateful today, next week, or next month, I promise, exciting change, a vibrant forecast. The biggest discrepancies right now, not really discrepancies, but adjustments are, we had a slight reduction in real estate taxes, which was surprising, but the big impact was delinquent taxes, so, you know, we have some people in our community hurting. So I wasn't sure why, I was like, what in the world? So I believe that estimates will stay the same, but I just did want to say that delinquencies are up. And another issue, and I think I'm going to say this most of the year, is the salaries of wages, it looks like they took a big drop, but last year, we had 27 pays, and in July, we had three payrolls, so that's why that looks like we're, you know, this, so far, we've only had the normal number in the school year, so there's just a timing difference, it's not really meaningful. Again, I already said we'll be updating the estimated revenues with the fair school funding and our known enrollment numbers, so we'll get that updated. Just highlights, auditors are going to be in our offices next week, just for starting at the cash portion of, you know, gap work papers have to be completed in a couple of weeks, and insurance open enrollment began yesterday, so we're clicking right along. I left a report on my desk, which I can't believe I did, I'll email it to all of you, it was the tentative summary of all of the fundraising lists. I'm going to remind with our community administrators meeting, but we need to get those in now for, you know, I have some in October, but we need them really through the spring to get those in there so you guys can approve them and see what's being looked at. So this is for the student activities, or the sporting activities that run through the books of Oregon City Schools, it's not the outside ones, and I left it on my desk, so I will scan it and put it up to you guys, I'm sorry about that. But unless there are questions, that is my report, we'll spend a little more time next month, because that's when we'll talk about all the adjustments.
Jane, talk about the transfer of the pay-to-participate fees to Athletic Fund?
Yes.
Can we get just a quick update of like the percentage that are paid, and like what's outstanding?
Sure, I'll do that. I don't have it up to now, but yeah.
Okay, thank you.
May I have a motion to accept the admissions report, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Zawiski?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulman?
Yes. Moving on to item nine, executive session, if we have one, we'll do it at the end, please. Consent agenda, are there any items that the members of the board wish to pull from the regular meeting consent agenda? Hearing none, a motion is needed to vote on the consent agenda items.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zawiski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulman?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulman, can I just introduce someone to the board?
Absolutely.
If you don't mind, that you just approved. So Dana Wheeler is right over here in the sweatshirt. Dana is going to be moving into our office next Monday, so we are very, very excited to have Dana join us, it's been a long time since there's been a change like this, you know, with the experience that we have in our office with Pam and Carol. So I do appreciate her eagerness and her willingness to want to be part of our team, and Dana's a Clay graduate and has two students in the district now, so she is certainly plugged into what's going on in and around, not only the school system, but she comes to us from the Y for 18 years working with that organization. So she's very plugged in, very talented, and I can't wait to get her started, so I just wanted to make sure that you all had a face with the name if you did not know Dana, and she'll be starting full-time next Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business, we have a transportation contract with the Mizell family, may I have a motion to accept that, please?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zawiski?
Yes.
Mrs. Mulman?
Yes. Item B, a maintenance truck purchase, we need a motion to purchase two maintenance truck, work trucks. The quotes will receive from the following, Dave White Chevrolet for $51,038, Don Chevy for $45,418 per truck, and Bowman Ford for $62,900 per truck. We recommend the purchase of two trucks from Dave White Chevrolet, if they're available, or one from Dave White and one from Don Chevy. May I have a motion, please, to purchase trucks?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Quick question, Dean, I know I emailed you on who we worked with at Bowman Ford, did we work, was it with someone, people in Oregon had no clue, I don't know if we went through the right person, look, it sounds like we maybe got a retail bid, not a, I'll say a fleet bid?
So Jeff is here, Jeff personally went to each one of the organizations and talked with them face-to-face, so he did come to the Oregon range of Bowman.
Okay. I think Bowman, I'll say, I don't know what's upset, just kind of felt like they were, I said, weren't broached properly, because they could add a lot better bids, I don't know. I think there's more, nothing with this one, but more moving forward, future, we make sure we connect with the right people at the right location, to make sure we, if it's retail or fleet, to make sure we're all on the same page.
It was presented as fleet.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Roll call.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zawiski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulman?
Yes. Item C, under new business, the acknowledgement of the Jerusalem Periodic Group Synthetic Cert Project, we need a motion to acknowledge that with funds from their JPG. May I have a motion, please?
So moved, with thanks.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zawiski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulman?
Yes.
And I'll just add, not to be part of the discussion, but I want to thank Jeff and the JPG for this new idea that they have, which is just to put a big rectangle turf piece out on their field, something kind of novel, kind of neat, and that their, their JPG wants to take on, and so that's, it's going to be something that's very beneficial to the kids on the playground, for sure. Thank you.
Make sure you pass the thanks on, Jeff. Okay, we have disposal of materials. There is one, there is one Chromebook, and there are 153 books to be disposed of, may I have a motion to do so, please?
So moved.
Any discussion? Roll call.
I follow, just a second, sorry, Jeff, okay. All right, Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zawiski?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulman?
Yes. Okay, disposal of equipment and materials, item B under new business, the items listed in the September 19th agenda for disposal have been disposed of in accordance with board policy. Item F, we have donations, we need a motion to accept the following donations. From the Kingdom Community Christian Ministries, they donated hygiene kits for Star and Jerusalem families, as well as for the Clay Care's Closet, over $200 worth of supplies for each location. Number two, Brenda Fontacy made a $500 donation to the athletic boosters to be used for the football program, along with a $1,000 donation for the Oregon School Foundation. Number three, Neuter donated four hands-on circuit boards for our STEM classes at Clay and Eisenhower with an estimated value of $1,000. The donation was made possible through Oregon School's Boot Camp, which was put on by the Clay High School Career and Tech Department. Number four, a $500 donation was received from the Jerusalem Township Firefighter Association, and was used to purchase two lobotomy and IV practice kits, and two mobile pressure, blood pressure monitors for the med tech program at Clay. And St. Charles Hospital made a donation of miscellaneous school supplies with an estimated value of $1,000 to start elementary. May I have a motion, please?
So moved, with gratitude.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Very grateful for all these donations, that's wonderful. Roll call.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Mr. Zawiski?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mulman?
Yes. Okay, superintendent's report, Mr. Gregory?
Yeah, I'll just echo the donation, thanks. That seems to be just a common occurrence now at every meeting that we're recognizing, and that's not even the donations that are going to all our groups throughout the district, on top of what we know of, so it's pretty, pretty amazing what people are going to do, when they feel good about what's happening in schools. So, not a lengthy report, but I just want to, I guess the first one is an observation that I really believe there's a positive difference being made. As we wind up the fall sports season, I just want to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of all our school athletic leaders and building leadership teams, our principals and APs that spend an inordinate amount of time supporting what we do after school, at both Clay and Facet. You can see there's a rededication to the commitment to creating and facilitating positive events, and taking the steps necessary to have that happen by talking with fans, and coaches, and kids, and really making it a point to behave correctly, to be positive, all those types of things that at times can get out of hand. So I guess I just want to acknowledge that I see a difference, at least I feel a difference. I don't know if others do, but I do. And there's just two, I guess, examples of that. I've received two emails that I thought just stood out, they weren't just short emails, they were long emails, describing, one, how well our students did at a football game, because they were sitting right neck, apparently next to the student section, and you heard the report today that said there's a, you know, a lot of kids, and there is a lot of kids, and they're behaving for the most part, and just having fun, and supporting the team win or lose, right? And so I'm super proud, so that grandparent reached out and made an effort. And then the one that really was, I thought, fantastic, too, was literally a referee, I don't know the guy, sent an email to Mr. Kiss and others, myself, and Mr. Zawiski, I'm not sure who was all in the email. Napoleon, if you don't know, was a rainy, cold, yucky night away varsity football game, and three overtime, very close, intense game, that we ended up losing in three overtimes. And he wrote a long email just saying how well the coaches acted throughout the whole game, presented themselves, followed the rules, all those types of things. And so it's just, again, it's just one item in a moment in time, but it was something that was acknowledged by a referee, and as we know, referee shortages are everywhere, and they'll be the first to criticize fans, or criticize parents, or criticize the way the whole thing was run. So I guess I just want to give some kudos to the people that are running these events, and it's making a difference, and I know how hard they're working to make change, because at times, you know, in the past, we've had maybe some moments in time that we're not proud of, so I think we're trying to reduce those or eliminate those.
By the way, we lost that game by one point.
Yeah, it went for two or three overtimes. It was cold, rainy, it was time to end it, someone was going to get hurt, and we didn't need anybody to get hurt. And just pointing out, this was mentioned, but Mrs. Mulman and I and myself will be at the Star Trucker Tree on Friday, assuming that it's going to happen, based on weather, and we're also going to participate in the candy crawl on Sunday from 4:00 to 6:00, so we'll be here at Clay, joining other student organizations, passing out fruit sacks, actually not even candy, fruit sacks. So excited about that, and just that's a good community event, and it's packed, and there's a lot of people that come out and participate in that, so. First quarter ends today, final grades are on the 25th, that might be in Dan's report, but I just wanted to kind of put that out there, that's always a question, so we're one quarter in, hard to believe. The banners for the district and school ratings are out in front of every school, if you've driven by all the schools, I think they look really good, I mean, they're certainly visible and present, thanks to Valley Robinson for designing those, and getting them ordered, and basically doing it all for behalf of us, so they look really, really good, and certainly proud of everyone that helped us achieve those scores. And then finally, it's just another kudos, I guess, to where we've gone with culture and our staff. You know, teacher leaders are a big part of what we've been doing here for a long time, but I think the more we can grow teacher leaders, the more we can give different perspectives on things, the better. So we had a couple teachers here at Clay High School kind of step up and want to, wanted to, I guess, do a book study on a book called Crucial Conversations, which is really kind of a next step in this whole Focus Three thing, that we talk about behavior, we talk about culture, one huge part of all that is having conversations with people that are meaningful, and that you have them at the right time, and you don't let things fester for a long time, and how do you have those without your emotions getting out of hand, and so forth. Anyways, that's what this book discusses. So we have, I don't know, Mrs. Kohler's been a part of that, others, maybe 18, 19, maybe it's 25, it's a big group, it's in here, it's a big group, biggest group I've ever been a part of, that are, this is all after school, I mean, so these are people that are staying after school to talk about a book. So they're stepping up, our teachers are stepping up, our staff's stepping up, we've got others from different classifications stepping up, it's awesome. And then in addition to that, I'm doing with others administratively, we're doing a future administrators academy that we have, gosh, around 16 regular participants that have come the last two months. So we have people that also want to learn, grow as individuals, which is part of our cultural playbook, you know, growth. And so I'm just really excited about those groups, because there's a lot of energy to get better and to learn. So I just want to point that out, good things are happening, I said this this morning at our back meeting, that I really do feel like Oregon is clicking on all cylinders right now, it's running really well, you know, we can, we have plenty of room to get better, and we'll strive for that, but I feel like all facets of the organization are at least rowing in the right direction at this point in time. So thank you to all of you, you're a part of that, for sure, your leadership, and that's my report, unless there's questions.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, sir?
Yep.
Old business, anyone? Nope? Okay, board committee reports, finance?
No report.
Capital improvement?
No report.
Policy personnel, we are still working on the review of that entire policy book, which used to be a notebook, about that thick, and it's taken us some time, but we should be ready by January, I think.
Yep, it's a timeline.
Academic?
We spent quite a bit of time doing a deep dive into the results of the state report card, as you know, we're celebrating our four-star achievement, which is state standards, which is an amazing accomplishment for all of the folks associated with the district. To put this in perspective, there's 607 districts total in the state of Ohio, 152 of them had four-star ratings, and I think it says on... And I think it says a lot about the people who have been working very diligently this year from the start, from the strategic plan through the actual implementation and breaking down of all the work that needed to be done to help elevate the success of our children and the parents and the kids, the work they're doing, the teachers, the support staff, I mean, everybody, this has been a team effort, and I think it's something we can all be very proud of. And of course, the key is, we want to keep it going, and that's gonna be very, very important going forward. We broke down and we did some deep diving into each of the schools, into the different areas, and we've just had amazing growth this year. I think that's something we really need to continue to celebrate throughout the year. Obviously, with the signs up on the schools, it's important to let the community know, the parents especially, that they're a part of a district that's very, very successful, and we're grateful for those banners being put up, Mr. Gregory. Some other information to share with the organization on behalf of the academics committee is Superintendent Gregory noted, the first quarter ended today, grades are final coming up here in less than two weeks. The third grade students are, will be taking the reading OST on October 24th and 25th. We will also be testing our students in the digital academy. Some other dates of importance, last week, October 9th to 10th, rigorous curriculum design training began at Facet, focusing on math and ELA, science and social studies will take place later. This is for a select group of teachers. Again, one of the ways to improve academically is you continue to improve the rigor of your academics for the children, and so this is something the district has been very committed to. We will also begin assessment, design and prioritizing standards as part of that. Other dates coming up, November 6th, K through 6 Work Day, as well as administrator relevance training, November 7th, K through 6 Conferences, and 7 through 12 Professional Learning Day. And then back again on November 8th and 9th for rigorous curriculum design training, which will continue at Facet. That is for academic.
Thank you. Anything from the legislative?
Nope, not at this time.
Student achievement liaison?
No report.
Okay, thank you. Board discussion. Most things have already been covered, but Facet has their annual volley for the cure this Thursday night at 6:30. And Star's hosting their first annual pumpkin run on Friday, depending on the weather. So anybody else have anything? Executive session, but let's look at announcement of special and regular board meeting. The regular board meeting I have is the 21st of November.
Yeah.
And work session comes up on November 7th at 5 o'clock? If that works for everybody?
That's not during that, that's the OSBA conference, is it?
No, OSBA is the week after that.
Oh, good, excuse me.
Two weeks after that, excuse me.
Two weeks after.
Week after, yeah.
It is election day, but I mean, outside of...
Outside of that, I don't know.
I mean, outside of that.
Election day is on the 7th, 14th.
What day are we looking at, the 7th?
The 7th. Just election day.
Word, Mike, 7th. This is for a work session.
For a work session?
Yeah. 5:30 to...
5:30.
5:30 is when we've been going. Unless you forget it.
For those who remember.
Gosh, one mistake, one mistake.
One mistake, eleven of a town.
More than one mistake.
Well, we all have.
Okay, so I know the work session then at, on November 7th is 5:30, and the regular board meeting on November 21st. Going backwards, executive session? For the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employee, and there will be no decisions made, and we will dismiss from there. And maybe in time for the band concert. So thank you for coming, appreciate it.
Will need a motion for this kind of session.
Motion for the executive session, please.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Mr. Shay?
Yes.
Mr. Savick?
Yes.
Mr. Zaviski?
Yeah.